Of the commission meeting. I'll call a meeting to order and we'll start the meeting with the pledge of allegiance, followed by a prayer from Gary Getting from Elliott Mortuary.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we pray? Our good and gracious God, we are so mindful of all the blessings that you give to us. There's so much that we take for granted that as we go about our lives, we just expect things to be a certain way. And yet, we recognize that all good gifts come from you and we thank you for that. And for this country in which we live, that we just pledged allegiance to, the freedoms that are ours as Americans, the responsibilities that come with those freedoms as well. And part of that is self-governance. And we thank you for those in this chamber this morning who guide and direct the affairs of this county. We pray for wisdom and discernment in the discussions and the decisions that take place that affect us all. We're so thankful for those who serve us out in the county as first responders. We pray for your watchful eye over them today. It's been mentioned, we're grateful for a break from the wind. I know those who fight fires are thankful for that. And just above all, I ask these things in the gracious name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I'd like to, the commissions to bring up the under business items, the update on recent fires by Chief Beer due to his other obligations. I'd like to move that up under, after the proclamations. And I don't have anything else, except I said welcome earlier. So let me read some proclamations. And the first one is the Reno County Crime Victims Rights Week. And it'll be received by Thomas Stanton, the district attorney. Whereas being a victim of crime and navigating the criminal justice systems can be a frightening and confusing experience. And whereas progress in improving the treatment of crime victims has been made through the efforts of thousands of victims and survivors who turned their own experiences into a force for positive change, ensuring that others can receive justice, meaningful assistance, and compassionate treatment before the law. And whereas since the passage of the Victims of Crime Act of 1984, and through the dedicated work of advocates, lawmakers, and victim service providers, there is a growing array of services and resources available to victims and to their loved ones. And whereas honoring the rights of victims, including the rights to be heard and to be treated with fairness, dignity, and respect, and working to meet their needs rebuilds their trust in the criminal justice and social service systems. And whereas individuals' trust in the compassion, understanding, and support to their communities is achieved through sustained, deep-riddled, and coordinated outreach. And whereas identifying, reaching, and serving all victims of crime, especially those from groups that often have less access to healing services and avenues to justice, is essential. And whereas our community's continued engagement with the challenges faced by victims of crime will ensure that the progress made to date is not lost and that new ground is broken to gain greater justice and healing to all victims, to gain greater justice and healing for all victims. And whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 18th through the 24th, 2021, provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that accessible, appropriate, and trauma-informed services are available to all victims of crime. And whereas Reno County District Attorney's Office is hereby dedicated to supporting victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building trust among our clients, collaborating with other service providers, and engaging our community in response efforts. Now therefore, as the Board of County Commissioners of Reno County, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of April 18th through 24th, 2021, as Reno County Crime Victims Rights Week, and reaffirm the Board of County Commissioners of Reno County's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during Crime Victims Rights Week and throughout the year, and expressing our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. In witness whereof, we have hereunto set our hands and caused the seal of Reno County, Hutchinson, Kansas, to be affixed this 13th day of April, 2021. Thank you for being here to accept this proclamation on behalf of victims' rights. And please comment.
Commissioner, thank you very much for the support of the commission for the crime victims of this community. Oftentimes, victims are kind of pushed aside as we ensure justice for defendants, but it's our commitment in my office to ensure justice for victims. We do that by the way we prosecute crimes, the way we contact those victims, and by the way we support them. One of the things we'll be doing over the next week is the, a community candle lighting ceremony, which will be Thursday, April 22nd, at 6:30 PM at the South Hutchinson Community Center at 101 West Avenue C in South Hutch. We've done that for many years. The only year we haven't done it was last year with COVID. But now that things are clearing up, we're able to do this again. It is our way of supporting not only victims, but the survivors, the families of those who have lost loved ones to violent crime in Reno County. So I, again, appreciate the support this commission has shown, not only for this effort, but also for my office over the years. And thank you again for issuing the proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To go along with children, we have the Week of the Young Child to be received by Michael Woods, Kansas Children's Service League Family Service Supervisor. And I'll read the proclamation here. Whereas the Early Childhood Council and other local organizations, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 12th through 17th, 2021. And whereas these organizations are working to improve early learning opportunities, which are crucial to the growth and development of young children, and to building better futures for everyone in Reno County. And whereas all young children and their families across the country and in Reno County deserve access to high-quality early education and care. And whereas in recognizing and supporting the people, programs and policies that are committed to high-quality early childhood education as the right choice for kids. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Reno County, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of April 12th through 17th, 2021, as Week of the Young Child, and encourage all citizens to work to make a good investment in early childhood in Reno County. In witness whereof, we hereunto set our hands and cause the seal of Reno County, Kansas, to be affixed this 13th day of April, 2021. Mr. Woods? Thank you.
Thank you.
For your efforts, and please inform us more.
Good morning. Again, my name is Michael Woods. One of my responsibilities is supervising the Healthy Families Program, which is a home visitation program. And it's a part of the Early Childhood Council. I'm here representing the council. We sponsor the Week of the Young Child on a yearly basis. Last year, as with most things, it, we were not able to, to provide the activities. This year, we decided to, usually, we have activities on each day of the week, activities that focus on the children and the families. This year, we decided to do it on one night, which is Third Thursday, which is this coming Thursday. With partnership of, of the Hutchinson Recreation Commission, we will have areas, tables, and booths, activities set up along Main Street from A up through Second Street. And so that the families can walk through, walk up the blocks and be able to see what's going on in the activities that are going on. We've just decided that we still wanted to do it, but we decided that it would be done on just one evening to try to capture everybody at one time. So I would like to thank the commission for the support, for their recognition of the Week of the Young Child. Thank you.
I've had the previous honor of attending a couple of the education centers for early ed and was very impressed.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm next.
You're next up too. Okay. All right. This is a Child Abuse Prevention Month, and the proclamation reads as such. Whereas children are key to the state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, and while children are our most valuable resource, they are also our most vulnerable. And whereas children have a right to be safe and to be provided an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Kansas families, thus preventing the far-reaching effects of maltreatment, providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds, and consequently building the foundation of communities. And whereas we must come together as partners so that the voices of our children are heard by all, and we are, as a community, extending a helping hand to children and families in need. And whereas by building a safe and nurturing environment for our children, free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can ensure that Kansas children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this state and nation. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure each family has the support they need to raise their children in a healthy environment. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Reno County, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2021, to be Child Abuse Prevention Month, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to prevent child abuse, thereby strengthening the communities in which we live. In witness whereof, we have hereunto set our hands and caused the seal of Reno County, Kansas, to be affixed this 13th day of April, 2021. Thank you, George.
My major responsibility is supervisor, office supervisor, for the Kansas Children's Service League's office in Reno County. The Kansas Children's Service League has and continues to advocate for the safety of all children in the state of Kansas. We are the state chapter for the national organization of Prevent Child Abuse America. I'd like to again thank the, the commission for its recognition for April being National Prevention, Prevent Child Abuse Month. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Beer, would you like to give us some recent updates on the fires that we had recently?
Good morning, commissioners. Chief Beer, Hutch Fire. Just want to take a couple minutes of your time this morning just to give you some numbers here on the, two of the bigger fires of the many fires that we've been battling in Fire District Two here. The ICE fire, which was Plum and 95th Street, north of town here, that fire was just under 300 acres, or just, I should say, just a little over 300 acres. There was 33 fire units that contained that fire. 68 fire personnel were brought to the scene. That included seven law enforcement and one bulldozer operator to contain that fire. And all 39 homes and 11 outbuildings were saved. That was the only fire that we had, some minor damage to one home, which is totally remarkable, with about a $6 million property value saved. And so, very successful fire. We had zero injuries on that fire. And I always, at the end of the day, I look at the end of the fire is, did we have any injuries or deaths? And that was none at that one. So that was a great outcome on that one. The Beer fire was around 600 acres. We had 46 fire units working that fire for, for days. 90 personnel, 18 law enforcement. We had two bulldozer operators. And we had a tanker 95, which is the airplane that assisted us on that fire. Property value saved in that fire was about $12 million of just assessed property value. 87 homes and 15 outbuildings were totally saved in that fire. I started my 35th year in the fire service this year. And that day, I was assigned on Williston on the east side of that fire. And I can tell you, commissioners, that I've seen stuff that I've never seen in my entire life, with heroic acts of bravery, what firefighters did to save people's homes. When you're fighting fire in 50, in 60 mile an hour winds, unless you're on the front lines, you can't even describe what it's like. You cannot even describe what that is like. And what these men and women did to accomplish zero homes being burned down is just remarkable. If you go out around Hutch in Fire District Two, it's true urban interface wildland firefighting, exactly what you see on TV and the nightly news in California and stuff like that. We have a home in our farmette on every five, 10 acres in that area. They're built into long driveways with thick cedars lining the driveways going up. And it is a nightmare out in some of these areas. And to have these type of outcomes is a true testament of the, what we follow is the incident command system, sort of like a football game. We have a quarterback and everybody needs to follow that plan. When we don't have people following that plan, and they're all doing freelancing and doing their own thing, that's when we get into trouble real fast. And to manage this type of incident, these type of resources, is, is pretty remarkable to maintain your span of control and to have the outcome that we did have on these fires. And so, again, I just want to touch base. It's been in the news a lot here, and I just wanted to give you some facts and figures here about two of the bigger fires and some of the numbers of the property and values that were saved in this effort. Do you have any questions?
I was out briefly to the command center on Fourth Street and observed how efficient and careful and calm that the Assistant Chief Hannah and his group were doing. That's how to be hard to keep that calmness whenever things happen like it was.
And we, we learn every time we go on these larger fires. And, you know, anytime we bring outside resources in outside of county, we will, the CTC on Fourth Street where my office is, that's where we're going to set up as a command post and run everything right out of there. We don't actually have to be on scene to run these big operations and stuff like that. So we learned every time we go out, and there's some things that we're prepping for the next one. We know history repeats itself. I think these mitigation burns definitely help us out. We did 10 miles again this year. And when you overlay these fires, like I told you before, there are key areas in the county where we can do some mitigation work. And alerting the public, getting them involved in our mitigation efforts with our Community Risk Reduction Division, and allowing residents to actually score their home and see what type of risks their home actually has, are key things that we can do to help our citizens out in these areas, to help us do our jobs better.
Was it too fast to fire on some of these instances to kill some more cedars?
Uh, no. I think, you know, right away, Chief Hannah and I were the first two on scene. The fire on the Beer fire started on Fourth Street. We walked out the doors that day, literally looked to the east, and we could see it. We called for resources. We probably had a three-minute response time. By the time Chief Hannah and myself were on scene, that fire was 100 yards off 17th Road Street. You know, and so it traveled from Fourth to 17th in probably three, four minutes tops. And then it got into some heavy timber with cedars on the other side, slowed things up a little bit. But these cedar trees were, you know, on fire. They were shooting flames 60, 70 feet in the air. They were actually spotting fires with the wind, quarter mile to a half mile ahead of the main body of fire. And so, when you have embers flying through the air, starting other fires and stuff like that, it was, it was really challenging. The one thing, it was, when it crossed 30th, it was in Bueller Fires District. And if you went on 30th Street, our road ends, or our district ends right there by Canton 30th. And we burned all the way out, the ditches on both sides there. So the other side we're across, they weren't burned out. So it'd been interesting if we could have held it there with our burnout operations in the, in the key areas. And so, we were, we were close to where we were at, but it was just one block over. So, but, you know, we're happy with the outcomes that we had. Again, no damage. We can replace the, the trees and some of the other stuff that was damaged. But the homes and our firefighters, pretty successful outcome. But thanks to, there's so many people to thank, our mutual aid partners, the county, the city, all their entities to allow us to do our job. And I think that's a true testament to the teamwork that you see out there.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, you know, appreciation from this commission and the community at large for, for the commitment and bravery and risk that, that all of your department and all these supporting agencies did for us. Thank you for that. I, I wonder if, if, if we're doing enough? If, if we, if we, you know, I'm, I'm a little worried that at some point, we won't be able to have such a successful outcome as you've brought here today. I mean, it seems like we're expecting some substantial risk from, from your people in this effort. And at some point, you know, that, that risk may be great enough to where we, we lose a house or potentially lose a firefighter in this process. And so, I, I'd like to know from you, chief, at what point do we say what we're doing today is not enough, that the risk is too great, and we need to be having a discussion about something else?
There is, that's a great question, commissioner. And there were homes along here, and I stated in a press release earlier, there were our homes in that district where I will not put a firefighter to protect that home. Sending them down that long driveway back in is putting our firefighters really on a suicide mission. And if that homeowner chooses not to help us out in any way, not help to mitigate, and some of the, around his property, the dense cedars and the tall CRP grass, some of these homes have grass literally four foot high right up to their home. And, and with, with a fire and the wind coming through there, we would lose firefighters and we would lose equipment and everything else. And so, there are homes that we just said, no, we're going to do the best we can to push it around. But some of these homeowners that want to be educated are willing to listen to us. We did a great, great risk assessment in the Spyglass subdivision out on the east side off 30th. Every home was stored. There's over 300 homes that were, a risk assessment was completed. We did four educational opportunities out there last year with our Community Risk Division. And it was, there's a lot of changes that happened in that division out there. Homeowners have taken and stepped up to do, mitigate some of the risks that they have. I think one of the biggest things is, is education and, and really getting out there in every fire district and doing an education with your citizens in your fire districts. And I know that's what Hutch Fire continues to do. We've got a long ways to go. And there's more mitigation work that we could do out there. Again, it just, it's a timing thing. The weather's got to be right. I think even with, I've seen, north of Plum, I've seen Inman Fire laying some fire down up on, in their territory up there. Even some of these volunteer departments, some of these historic areas, they're trying to build that buffer to help us. Again, that 30-foot roadway, we can make it 80 feet. That's a big difference for us to stop a fire and stuff like that. So there is additional work that can be done on all ends of the spectrum here. We are in a very unique area here. Again, this is not in the western part of the county here. The core around here is a lot different. It's a totally different firefight than fighting CRP grass in the western part where there's one home and, you know, how many miles apart from each other. And so, it's a, it's a totally different style and effort. And I think the, how progressive we've gotten here, we're fighting fire with fire. When you're laying fire down in 50, 60 mile an hour winds, you have to have your resources in order if you're going to be successful, because it's a very dangerous operation.
So, you know, I think, I think at some point, you know, if you have recommendations, you, you may need additional resources. I mean, I think maybe one of the things that would be easy to do is compare that to the costs associated with fighting these fires. I mean, I assume both the city and the county have some additional costs. I assume some of it's emergency funding, but at the end of the day, you know, the taxpayer's still paying for the significant amount of resources we're deploying. Would it be better to use some of those resources to mitigate?
I, I agree with that. One of the things that, you know, in, in a perfect world, if my outer perimeter stations had four people on an engine instead of three, because I could deploy two pieces of apparatus right out of the bat. Hutch Fire prides itself on, on any of our wildland fires to keep it under five to 10 acres. And most, 90% of our fires, we do that because we have such a quick response time. And they're responding all with one brush truck out of that, like Station Six on Plum Street. If I can deploy two units automatically, we're way ahead of the game. And we, it's a huge difference in what we do. Whether it's a structured fire, whether it's a wildland fire, response time, getting on scene is the number one important thing. And we, we can't be waiting, you know, an extra minute here, an extra minute there. It does make a big difference. That's where I talk to you about the accreditation. If we can shave a minute off our dispatch time, our turnout times, all these things add up into a quicker, more efficient response with our resources that we have. It's not so much, we have the resources to do that, we just don't have the personnel to do that.
Okay. Well, I, you know, I appreciate it. You know, it doesn't go unnoticed that you're, you're the fire chief of the city of Hutchinson, and you're here, you know, helping the whole county. So thank you for that. And thank you to the city of Hutch for, for that. I, I think there's, you know, this commission ought to, you know, encourage or support any efforts that our emergency management department and, and the city of Hutch Fire Department and our, our district fire departments can do to come together to, to make additional recommendations that we can consider to help prevent and mitigate some of the risks that are out there. So.
And that's a great point, commissioner. I think he never gets a lot of creditors under the radar is Adam and Adam Weiser. He, he's a godsend. I want him on every one of my calls that I go on. He's a great resource to get me additional state resources and if I need the plane and stuff like that. His dedication and commitment to what we do out there is stellar. And without his work being on scene, supporting us, I want all, I cannot make every decision by myself, but I surround myself with a heck of a great team. And Adam's part of that team. And he brings a lot to the table. And so, yeah, I agree with that.
Chief, do you think we need to do additional work on our Resolution 2017-12, which is the open burning ordinance?
100% yes.
Well, I guess I for one would like to see your comments about how you might suggest changes to that. I, I feel that we certainly need to give our rural farmers the opportunity to burn, but I think we need to be very concise on when and how and therefore, so.
I totally agree. We, the farmers need their time to burn, but there's a time and place. And I think we could better prepare that. And what we see and what all the firefighters in the county have to deal with, there are better ways to do different things.
Who would be the group to look at changes to that?
I think the County Chiefs Association. I mean, you got them all there from all the districts. I'm just, I'm just a city and district two. I'm just one voice of many. And I think liaison with, with one of the commissioners might be appropriate and to have a deeper discussion on what it takes to mitigate these things. They're getting more frequent. You know, wildfire season was typically in the spring. We started last December. Actually, November was the big one in Harvey County already. And so, these things are almost, you know, year-round. Even 4th of July last year, we ran, with the fireworks, we ran a bunch of brush fires last year when it was dry in the summertime. These things aren't going away, and they do take a lot of resources.
I wish we could get more burn associations out there for those folks that are in the rural area, similar, very similar to what Purdy Prairie has. They're, they do the best job they can.
Totally agree with you, commissioner. They're great. They're great. Totally agree with you, Commissioner. They're great. They're great. They understand how fire burns. They got the resources and more people need to get involved with a burn. That's one of the recommendations I would have right away. Is take advantage and get involved with these burn associations. They know what they're doing.
At, at least you got a few more manpower, because there's no telling how things happen, even if you've got lots of things going on. I know I've been involved in a couple of them that, uh, you know, one of them was the worst thing of all. There wasn't any wind. And so no matter how much manpower you had out there, you didn't know which direction it was gonna go. And on the same hand, it, it's, it's just, you can't have enough manpower or ATVs and pickups with water available.
Yep.
And so I'd be interested, just like Commissioner Sellers, to hear, to hear how we can strengthen that part of it as well as everything else. Okay?
Fair enough.
I think we need to be direct on this. And, and if it takes a motion, I, I would be happy to make one. But, uh, you know, I think there's consensus here to direct, uh, you know, it sounds like this comes from our emergency management department and direct, uh, that department to engage the fire chiefs and, and Chief Beer in a discussion to bring recommendations back to this board for, um, review.
I don't know that we need a motion specifically. I think we can direct this. And also part of this, I think, may come out of the Five Bugles. But we can certainly, I think, commissioners agree, we just get started on this anyway.
And it might be good to take a little public comment, too. It seems like there's, there's people that have, you know, I know Adam gets, um, commentary every time he puts a burn bear, burn ban into effect. I know I've gotten emails from, uh, property owners that are very concerned about the ongoing risks. So, so maybe taking a little bit of public comment wouldn't hurt as well.
And just remember, you got very different demographics of the county. And, uh, what's good for the western is not really probably good for District Two around the perimeter of Hutch. Totally different animals in itself. And so, you know, I think you could tailor different things for different areas and, uh, stuff like that, so.
I know when I was involved in, in, uh, early on in this two thousand seventeen, uh, I had contacts with, uh, the fire chiefs, uh, in my district and, uh, as well as had conversations with you and, and Chief Hannah, as well as the Kent livestock association and, and received many other counties', uh, burn rules. And, uh, it was a great help in getting those essentially changed, uh, regarding open burning and ag burning. And so I think, great, we need to look at this every so often. Things change.
It'll be good to hear from Adam and just, even if it's just a, hey, you know, here's the schedule and who we're gonna talk to and here's when we plan to report back, just so we keep some pressure on it. I know it's a busy time, so.
I know our phone calls probably had more to do with the idea that it was not a total burn ban, but it was a twelve-hour burn ban because of this, because of the conditions that everybody knew, if they checked correctly, knew it wasn't supposed to be burning anyway.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it. Carla?
Good morning, Commissioners. Carla Nichols, Director of Public Health for Reno County. Our COVID nineteen update, um, data as of four twelve. Total cases, we've had seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-five, um, COVID nineteen cases. Total active cases are twenty-two. Total deaths is one thirty-eight. Our deaths in the last thirty days have been three. Our fourteen-day positive test rate as of four-four is five point two. The week prior to that, our fourteen-day positive test rate, or two weeks prior to that, was three point eight. And then the previous week to that was two point five. Um, hospitalizations as far in, uh, at Hatch Regional, they've, yesterday they had sixty-five admissions and two of those were COVID nineteen. On our vaccine administration, our, um, number of Reno County residents that have received at least one dose of the vaccine is eighteen thousand five hundred and forty-eight, uh, which equates to a twenty-nine point seven-one percent of Reno County residents that have received at least one dose of the COVID nineteen vaccine. The recommendations from the Reno County Health Department and the Medical Collaborative regarding COVID nineteen include, include the following mitigation measures, including social distance by more than six feet, wash hands frequently, wear a mask, stay home when you're sick, and get vaccinated. If you're sick, you can get tested, um, by logging on or going to gogettested.com for more information. Probably the biggest national news this morning is that the CDC has asked for a halt in the administration of the J and J vaccine. Um, and with us having a, um, large pod tomorrow, um, our efforts this morning and into this afternoon will be canceling that pod um, for those residents that have been signing up for that, um, Johnson and Johnson vaccine. We also had many clinics scheduled this week, um, as far as going out to different places, going out to Salvation Army and three different schools this week for that Johnson and Johnson. So, all of those clinics at this time will be canceled until we receive that further guidance from the Centers of Disease Control. Um, we do encourage residents to please go get the vaccine. Um, we are, um, we do have the vaccine available today at the First Union Methodist Church. There are appointments still available. They can just log on to our website and schedule that vaccine. With us canceling, um, the pod tomorrow at the sports arena, we will have a clinic at the church. It is the Moderna vaccine, um, that they can schedule. Just give us probably later this morning, early afternoon to get that set up. And then they can have that, um, clinic. So we will have vaccine efforts, um, today, Wednesday, Thursday at the church. And then Friday, we are at the sports arena for that second dar- dose pod, um, also. So, um, that's probably the biggest news this morning is, um, the recommendation from the CDC that we will be following. Any, any questions?
Sure. Uh, do you have significant, uh, vaccines other than the Johnson Johnson to continue the vaccination process?
We do have the Moderna vaccine, yes.
In a significant quantity?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the, the second part that, uh, I'm concerned about is, uh, your fourteen-day positive test rate.
Yes.
Uh, and a little bit of this, I think, goes along with what I saw from the state yesterday, that the state is up, but not to the percent that Reno County is. And I think Reno County's higher than Sedwick County at this point in that fourteen day.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, do you have any comments about what this shows?
So when we look at the data, um, we, we talked to our epidemiologist. Our epidemiologists are the one doing our test, case investigation. So as we receive the information about those cases, they're doing the investigation to see if it is a specific family or if it's something, um, right now we're, we're isolating, isolating it to a place of work. Um, so they're aware of it. At, at this point, when I'm talking to our epidemiologist, nothing. It's something we need to be aware of, not alarmed of at this point. And so we go to the experts and ask them what they're seeing, if there's something. But during this time, it is a, a perfect time that if people can continue to wear a mask, we would ask them to continue. We would recommend them wear a mask and social distance and get the vaccine. That's what we can do right now is prevention. Please get the vaccine. And that's what we're trying to work on our continued education to individuals to please get the vaccine.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation.
Thanks, Carla, for being here. Um, so, I got, I think one of the things that, um, you know, I've been asking questions of the health department of just, you know, our data collection and presentation. And, you know, on one hand, it, it feels like, um, things are a lot better. And, you know, maybe we're relaxing, everybody's relaxing a little bit. On the other hand, um, you know, media reports and I think, um, at least at the federal level, there's conversations about, uh, you know, a potential increase, um, in, in cases. And so, um, how do we? Like, I, I see kind of a double standard occasionally where, you know, we, um, we're asking people to still wear masks and still do all of this, yet, um, you know, some of the things that were, like our data, I think, from, from a data analysis perspective, we're still looking at it as we looked at it about a year ago. And, you know, one example is we have not factored vaccines into the risk analysis, uh, in, in our alert level. I think another one, you know, is, you know, have we, you know, come up with a plan for, say, if we get back to the red, you know, what are we gonna do? I think it would be better to have conversations like that when we're in the green than if we're, you know, in the red. And so, um, I guess I would continue to encourage, tho- those are probably difficult conversations to, to have when resources are tight. They're also probably difficult to bring here when they're somewhat divisive. But, um, I would prefer to have them now, um, and agree upon a strategy than, than do what we did a year ago when nobody knew anything. We were just, you know, throwing, throwing things against the wall and hoping they stick. So, um, is that something you could do?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Let's see if, see my notes here. If there's anything else, um. Do, do you know, is, is there, is there a reduction in, in risk to the community? Um, because those that are, uh, most vulnerable, generally speaking, have had the opportunity now to have the vaccine?
That's a, that's a tough question to answer, Commissioner Friesen. Um, it is, but we would like, if you, if you listen to the experts, um, in a community, you would really like probably seventy to eighty percent of your, your community to be vaccinated. We're at, we're, we're not even at thirty percent. Um, so with that kind of, we, we really need the support of the community to continue to get your vaccine, so we can try to stay ahead of those mitigation measures. So hopefully, if the vaccine wants to ramp up with any of those variants, w- we can keep it at bay. And so that's what we have to work on right now is what can we do? And what we can do right now is we can hear what's coming from different other places around, around the country. So to put that at bay is we can all, we can, people can do what they can on getting the vaccine. That's, that's what we can do.
And maybe to put it a different way, i- if you, if you take off the table, the scenario where, you know, I, I think, maybe I'm oversimplifying it, but I, I think, um, the big concern is this is killing people, right? And if we take that off the table, because, uh, for, for example, Reno County are, the, the, the youngest person that died was fifty years old. And as far as I'm aware, we've made sure everyone in that category has had the opportunity to get a vaccine. In fact, you know, I've, I've looked at, you know, you can go to dillons.com and schedule a vaccine today.
Yes.
I mean, everybody in this room can. And so it seems like we've done a pretty good job of giving everybody the opportunity that's at risk to get it. Do, are we still behind on other things? Like, are there people that are at risk that aren't getting it? Like, it seems like the risk profile's changing and we haven't talked about that.
I think that probably the health department is looking at these different angles and, uh, regarding what happens if it does increase larger and we'll have a plan, very similar to what was before. If, unless things change specifically. And all you can do right now is make that available and, and, uh, try to keep people's mind going in that direction. Is that about to answer the question?
And it's, it's educate, educate and educate. And if that's not working, we have to change our, our tactics on educating individuals that we really need them to get the vaccine. So at this point, it's education to individuals. And trying to take care of or, or putting other rumors at bay that we really need to, um, help our community by getting our vaccine.
Well, thank you, Carla.
You're welcome.
Anybody else got anything more?
Thank you.
Appreciate the update.
You're welcome.
This time we come to public comments on items not on the agenda? No one? All right. Uh, are there any additions or revisions to this agenda? That one would like Commissioner Sellers and then Commissioner, huh? County? Randy?
No.
Joe? All right. The consent agenda consists of vouchers totaling four hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-two cents. The reappointment of Ray Hemmon, Shannon Haushardt, Lacy Stoffaker, Stoffaker, I'll probably pronounce that. So, uh, Lacy, I apologize. And Erica Rivera to serve on the Community Corrections Advisory Board for a two-year term ending March of tw- two thousand twenty-three. Solid waste purchase of a two thousand sixteen case tractor from Can Equipped at a total cost of a hundred thousand. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh nine amending in total resolution nineteen ninety-five dash twenty-five, which established maximum weight of vehicles traveling on all asphalt county roadways. Public works policy on oversized overweight haul loads. And the public works policy revision on utility poles and wireless support structures. We can take that all as one unless the commissioner would like to pull one out to discuss further. And, uh, I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some of.
Second, Chairman, uh, could, uh, our, uh, Public Works Director just very briefly discuss D E and F? Uh, and thoughts there on, on those three situations, the, the weight of vehicles, why those are increased, uh, the oversized load policy, and then the utility pole.
Don Britton, Director of Reno County Public Works. Uh, on the overweight policy, the maximum, uh, load that was allowed on Reno County asphalt roads was eighty thousand pounds. And, uh, we raised that to eighty-five-five, which is the normal, uh, in most, on most roads. And now that we have much better roads than we used to have, uh, our roads will handle that legal load of eighty-five thousand five hundred pounds. So that was the change on that. Uh, the other question on the utility poles is we changed that because utility poles, uh, didn't, uh, define or, uh, the poles for, uh, wireless communications, so that, uh, so that this policy, uh, is a standard and a policy for both utility poles of all kinds and wireless communication poles.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Don. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Yes. On business items, we'll have the planning case twenty twenty-one dash oh two, a request for a conditional use permit to place a manufactured home at ten oh two North Obie Road. Mark?
Mark von Achen, County Planner. Uh, this property is located east of, of the airport on Obie Road. Previously on this property, uh, there was a nineteen seventies mobile home on the property that was, uh, removed about a couple of years ago. In your packet, there is a series of what we call property record cards. I included those in there so the commission could see how many manufactured homes are located in the area and the condition of those manufactured homes at the time that the picture was taken. Uh, the rest of my background information really explains why the owner needed a conditional use permit. And that's really because the existing manufactured home at the time, that nineteen seventies one, uh, was considered a non-conforming use. And so in our regulations, manufactured homes require a conditional use permit. Moving on really to, uh, to the factors, uh, I think the most important factor that you need to consider here with this case is number two. And that's whether the location of the proposed- of the proposed use is compatible to other land uses in that area. And, uh, we found that there were at least six other manufactured homes in the area. So staff really believes that this proposed land use is compatible with the surrounding area. Lastly here, uh, this area is within the City of Hutchinson's area of notification. So we sent the entire packet to the City of Hutchinson Planning Department. We also sent, uh, notice to the airport and we did not receive any feedback from the city regarding this case. So staff recommends approval of this based on the nine factors that you see listed in my report. Uh, I attached four conditions of approval and for the record, number one is the manufactured home shall be constructed on July thirteenth, nineteen ninety-four or a later date and may be placed in a different location other than what is shown on the site plan. Reason it's nineteen ninety-four is that is the year that HUD really drastically changed the way manufactured homes are, are manufactured. And so that, that date is actually in our current zoning regulations. Second one is the owner shall submit verification of the construction date of the manufactured home. The third one is that the applicant shall meet all applicable federal, state, and local regulations. And then the fourth one is that the county reserves the right to rescind the conditional use permit. On March eighteenth, the Planning Commission held a, a public hearing. Really the, the concerns with the Planning Commission and the discussion items were regarding the septic system on the property, uh, the availability of water. There is a public water line that runs down that road. And also the type of foundation that is gonna be used to, uh, anchor the mobile home to, to the, uh, the property there. And so at the end of all that discussion, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this request by a six to nothing vote. Planning Commission did change one condition, uh, that I had recommended to them, and that was the first one. They recommend that the manufactured home shall be a two thousand ten model or newer. Um, I, I'm here to tell you that the owner, uh, has already put a down payment on the two thousand twenty-one model. So really, uh, this is just kind of, you know, extra assurance, I, I guess, in case something would happen with that one. But really, uh, the two thousand twenty-one model that you have in your packet and pictures of is the one that she is going to be purchasing should this be approved. So with that, I would stand for any questions on the board?
I would move that we approve planning case twenty twenty-one dash oh-two.
With the?
With the provisions that the Planning Commission made.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the conditional use permit to place a manufactured home, uh, with the conditions set forth and the factors, uh, recommended by the Planning Commission.
I've got a comment or an observation of, this is a significant amount of, of work. Um, and, and I know staff's just doing their job. Um, and, and maybe this is what this commission wants. And I don't know enough about it to really say it is or isn't, but this is a lot of paperwork, a lot of analysis for the placement of a manufactured home in, in a rural part of the county. It seems like a lot of red tape. Like, is this normal? Like, do we always do this?
The, the prior regulations did not have this requirement. Uh, my, my comment to that would really be that there could be certain areas of the county where a manufactured home, uh, is not really appropriate. You may have a, a situation where you have a residential subdivision that's full of uh, stick-built homes or, or modular homes. And if we would go under the previous regulations or if we would make a modification here, uh, then somebody could purchase a vacant lot or tear down a dilapidated structure and then just move a manufactured home in, in an area like that. This process, uh, albeit, yes, it is, like you said, a quote, red tape or so. It provides that assurance in that review and notification to property owners that a manufactured home is gonna go into an area. In this particular case, uh, it's probably not as big of a deal because there are other manufactured homes in the area. However, there could be other areas of the county where a manufactured home is not really maybe an appropriate land use out there, so.
Makes a lot of difference whether it's a residentially designed manufactured home.
Correct.
And which codes they meet. Now, I, I, it's been a long time since I've been involved in that. But there was two different basically kinds of manufactured homes. There was the, uh, modular type, uh, versus the resident, the, if you would, double or triple wide homes. And, uh, they were de- designed and built under different standards. One was the, used to be the UBC Uniform Building Code, and then the other was the manufactured home code. And, uh, and so whether they go in a area where there's what, like you said, stick-built homes would depend a lot on some covenants and restrictions in that development as well. If there aren't any, then, uh, you could come in and, and, and talk about the residential design, which has some criteria, uh, width versus length.
Correct, yes. If it was a residential design manufactured home, if it was a modular house, uh, something that's put on a permanent foundation, uh, even what I would call a, a shed house, somebody builds what looks like an accessory structure and they convert it to living space, all those types of, of structures are permitted by right with just a zoning permit. It's the manufactured home, uh, the type of home that is placed, say, typically on cinder blocks, that's the one that requires the, the conditional use permit. So I had those conversations with this applicant here and she still preferred to have this, uh, manufactured home out there. So that's what triggered the, the conditional use permit.
How many staff hours do you think we put into this?
There's probably, all told, probably at least ten hours writing the report, making the copies, plus, uh, thirty-minute to forty-minute Planning Commission meeting. There, there's a lot of time. There's a lot of time involved in this, but I still believe it's probably worthwhile because there could be certain areas of the county where manufactured homes maybe are, are not really appropriate.
I think when we get our new computer system in, that, uh, we won't need a twenty-five-page report on paper.
And quite honestly, this is.
It'll be all on the computer.
Yes. And then you can print it off if you want.
It is now. I, I disagree somewhat with Commissioner Friesen on the importance of this. The Commission, uh, respects the zoned area that's in Reno County, and I think we owe it to people that in that zoned area to inform them of things that are going on in their areas. And just as a matter of fact, that this process requires the people in the area to know what's going on, I think it's pertinent, uh, uh, right of other property owners to, to know. Uh, and, and we're wanting to encourage additional zoning in, in the county. And with that zoning that might occur, we've got to tell people that there'll be protections against, uh, things that might not be wanted. So I, I think it's a legitimate, uh, process for the county to take.
Well, and I think you've misconstrued my questions as, as a disagreement in the process. I was just asking, you know, why and making an observation that it is a significant amount of work. I didn't, didn't, didn't state that it wasn't necessary or that I felt like it wasn't important.
I, I feel like that if Mark was able to do this in ten hours plus, he did a great job on it, so.
This is one of the more simpler cases, I guess, compared to other types of land uses. But yeah, it's still, it's still staff, staff time involved with it.
Okay. Is there any other further questions? I think we can always look for different ways to streamline things as we go along. And I think you do that. So roll call, please.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yeah.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes. Thank you, Don. Next on the agenda is the agreement with Kirkham, Michael, and Associates to complete the survey and design plans for the sixty-ninth Avenue Bridge at twenty-six point seven zero for replacement over Cow Creek at a lump sum of seventy-three thousand dollars. Don?
Well, this is a, a bridge that we got a cost share on and we need to have it designed now. And Kirk and Michael is the one that, uh, I had, uh, applied for this and we got it. So I would recommend that we award this, uh, to Kirk and Michael to design this bridge.
All right. What's the Commission's wish?
I would move we approve.
Okay. I'll second. Uh, any discussion? Questions from Don? If not, roll call?
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes. Next is, uh, agreement with JEO Consulting Group, Inc. to complete the survey and design plans for Wilson Road Bridge, twenty-five point nine zero Willow Brook entrance for replacement over Cow Creek at a lump sum fee of one hundred and three thousand, two hundred and forty dollars.
Uh, I've decided to replace this bridge. This was the bridge that was gonna be replaced at the same time the forty-third and Nickerson Road Bridge was. But due to the cost of that, we took this bridge out. I put it clear in twenty twenty-four because at that time I was gonna have my bridge fund, uh, offer one million, three hundred thousand to pay towards the forty-third bridge and Nickerson Bridge. But you gentlemen went ahead and bonded it and I have my money back. So now I moved this bridge back into twenty twenty-two to be replaced because now I have that funding. And, uh, the reason I wanna give this to JEO is because, uh, Brad Shores, the engineer that I've worked with for years, that, uh, was the head engineer over the rehab on eighty-second Bridge out by Bueller, the Madoro, Madoro Road Bridge on the edge of town, uh, the bridge and the, uh, Nickerson Boulevard Bridge on the west side of the city, the Frank Hart Rehab, the Woody Seat, uh, expansion joint replacement. And he, and he was the one, the head engineer on the forty-third bridge design and the Nickerson Road Bridge design. So he's very good at what he does. We have a very good working relationship. He now has this, is in this company and located in his office is Wichita. And if we have him do this, now I'm dealing with four different engineering firms on bridges and utilities and stuff. The other three are pretty well-packed and I wanna give, uh, Brad an opportunity at his new company.
And you feel like the bid that he gave you is appropriate for this amount of work?
Yes. When we, when I had a talk with him, I, I told him, I said, I was very happy with this work, but he's gonna have to be very competitive. And I compared this to what it would have been with some other firms that I knew of, and yes, he is.
Okay.
Do, do we, are we coordinating with the Corps and the city since the city owns the levy, um, on this project?
Well, the city doesn't own where the bridge is, but when I get approval for the design of this, that I know I'm gonna br- build it, then I'm gonna have meetings with the, with the people of Willow Brook, with the city council or mayor, whoever, and to have discussion on this.
I just have a, some, um, some unique experiences with, with our, our business over there. And it's actually the City of Hutch that owns that levy. And, and so, uh, I just encourage you to check all that out. We, you know, put some utility lines over there and, and we're surprised by some of the, um, ownership of, of the levy and, and whose authorities were, were out there.
This bridge is on the west side of the levy over on Wilson Road.
They're pretty particular about their levy. I just, you know, I know that. So I'm just encouraging you to have the conversations ahead of time.
We'll handle it all.
Thank you.
Okay. Entertain a motion? Or we already had one?
I moved it.
Sorry.
Yes.
Daniel?
Second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to approve the agreement with JEO Consulting Group as it was presented to the Commission. Roll call?
I, I have a question.
Okay.
Just thought of it. I'm looking at your picture of Wilson Road Bridge, twenty-five point nine. You, you mentioned to, uh, me the other day that the proposed new bridge will, uh, allow the old bridge to stay while the new bridge is being built.
Yes.
Correct?
It's, that's what I am going to do.
Okay. So will the entrance off of Wilson Road on what is called the Willow Brook Road change?
With the new bridge?
Yes.
Yes. Cause the new bridge is gonna be located. My recommendation will be, I'll need to meet with engineering and everything, but I plan on building the bridge on the north side of the existing bridge. And I believe that you can come off their main road and go, drive straight onto this bridge. The other options are building it on the south side, which would be a longer bridge, more roadwork and stuff. But when we're building the new bridge, they'll still be able to use the road they're using now and the bridge they're using now.
Okay. But Don, I didn't quite understand what you said. You probably said it well, but I didn't hear it well. The intersection with Wilson Road and the Willow Brook Road will change?
Yes.
To the north?
Yes. If we build it to the north or to, either way, it's gonna change. And that is a part of this construction, which raises the price of it. I think the roadwork is six hundred thousand, estimated. So if we build it to the north, then you will be able to come up on Wilson Road at a ninety-degree angle instead of an angle, which I think is better and safer anyway. But this is all just me speculating right now.
Any further question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Sheriff, you're up next with an update.
Hey, good morning. Darren Campbell, Sheriff of Reno County. Uh, thank you for allowing me here this morning to provide this little update. Um, I'm gonna kinda go into a, a little bit of an overview. It's been a while since I've been up here, uh, probably a little over a year or more. Uh, and, uh, gotta give you an update over some of our, uh, some of our divisions here. Uh, the, the Reno County Sheriff's Office mission is to ensure the highest level of public safety while protecting the rights and dignity of those we serve through community partnerships and an unbiased enforcement of the law. The Reno County Sheriff's Office is staffed to ninety-nine personnel, eighty-three full-time sworn deputies, uh, twelve civilian support staff, and four part-time offender registry personnel. The administration of the Sheriff's Office consists of myself, under Sheriff Sean McCauley, Captain of Detective Division, Steve Lutz, Captain of Patrol Division, Levi Blumenhurst, and Captain of Jail Division, Sean McClellan. The Detective Division is a plainclothes division which consists of eight sergeants, five deputies, and five civilian employees. Their responsibilities are not inclusive, but, uh, consists of arrest warrant service, case investigations, crime analysis, uh, drug enforcement investigations, forensic computer analysis, fugitive extradition, juvenile matters, offender registration, and service support. Uh, detectives are also responsible for overseeing the crime stoppers of Reno County, hostage negotiation, and various additional duties. Uh, they receive cases, uh, made by the Patrol Division that are assigned to them by their captain, uh, for follow-up investigation based on the ability to, to create and continue leads until the case is solved or closed. Uh, deputies promoted to the Detective Division come from the Patrol Division. Uh, currently, uh, we have no vacancies in the Detective Division. Uh, we have filled all those slots and they've all been through training and, and are, uh, currently working cases. The Patrol Division consists of, of course, patrol deputies, civil process, courthouse security, reserves, and cadets. Uh, special units would consist of the, the Special Response Team, Honor Guard, and Senior Patrol. In order for a deputy to be allowed to patrol, uh, be able to patrol by themselves or perform any of these functions, uh, they first must attend the fourteen-week, uh, training at the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center. Uh, they go through two weeks in service at, once they graduate here at the department. Uh, that's put on and hosted by, uh, ourselves with various instructors that we have throughout our agency. And that's coordinated through our, uh, Field Training Officer Director, Sergeant David Radke. Um, then they go through another fourteen weeks of field training. Uh, during these fourteen weeks, they progress from being told pretty much every move they make by their training officer into conducting business on their own. Uh, there's, this broke down into three phases. It starts at the, the crawl, the crawl, walk, run method. And they're monitored closely in a daily observation reports made each day to discuss positive actions and negative actions. Uh, the training is evaluated by the Field Training Director and the Patrol Captain. Remedial training may be necessary if a rookie deputy is not meeting standards. Uh, they may go back, uh, to operating in the jail or be terminated should, uh, should it be egregious. should, should it be egregious. The county consists of 1,257 square miles, which is broken down into three beats. Each beat has a patrol deputy assigned to respond to calls for service within their assigned beat. There could be a traffic unit available based to respond to motor vehicle accidents, catalytic roadway calls, or typically if there's a supervisor, which will respond to specific calls for backup and provide guidance and direction on how a deputy responds, investigates, and approves paperwork to be sent for further investigation or prosecution, just to name a few duties of theirs. For the month of March, deputies responded to 1,056 calls for service. There were a total of 512 traffic stops made by deputies, indicating that there were 512 interactions with the public that didn't involve an incident. The case reports which are made will be sent to the detective division to determine if further investigation is necessary. Currently, there are no vacancies in the patrol division. We had one retirement last month that we immediately was able to fill by a KALTC graduate. Deputy John Orson completed over 24 years of service with the Reno County Sheriff's Office and retired. The correctional facility, of course, you all know it's a 25-bed facility, which is ran by a detail of eight deputies and supervised by a sergeant 24-hour a day. We lifted the COVID restrictions on arrests over a month ago and have been managing it really well. The population of the facility this morning consists of 124 inmates incarcerated, 06. On a daily basis, deputies in the jail deal with drunk, high, mentally unstable people whom they are required to process. Meaning each person that comes into the facility gets booked in on appropriate charges, fingerprinted, photographed, and other processing protocols based on whether the person is gonna be able to bond right out immediately, or will be going into population for an undetermined length of stay. Along with dealing with incoming arrests, there's usually several events going on in the facility. There's always linen being exchanged, hygiene items being refilled, canteen being distributed, meals being served, medications being passed. Along with these duties, there's approximately 12 different programs, which we've begun to get in full swing to assist inmates, which are housed within the facility for a length of time. Recently, we have lost one of our mental health employees. She left to work for a state agency. Audra Goldsmith, who did phenomenal work for the facility out there and actually was integral in helping us become an innovator county. She, she's gonna be doing great work with KEDs. Our partner with Horizon's Mental Health has been great, and they've supplied another one, another mental health professional that we have down there. And he came on about a week before Audra left, so she was able to do a good handoff, and he's been doing great work and getting integrated very well. We've currently lost a few deputies. Two have moved back home to be closer with family, and one's accepted a position with the South Hutch Police Department. We have one in the background and two applicants in interview for later this week. We lost one of our two nurses due to an illness and the inability to receive a full release to come back to work after about six months. We've advertised a position for several weeks and have had not any applicants, but one who did not meet the requirements. But we haven't had any more applicants due to the starting pay being so low. They can go somewhere else and make several dollars above what we start out at. The total agency budget consists of $6,611,844. There's two sides of this budget. We have the jail side, which is considered, and the sheriff's side. As of end of March, there's been a total of 19.5% of the budget expended, and historically, the expenditures are on track as expected for our budget. The undersheriff has been diligently working on the next year's budget, although, like every year, I know the hopes to keep the budget flat would be great. Unfortunately, some of the services required are, are increasing their fee to us, which is out of our control. I also believe we are on track to have turned in most necessary documents, move forward with budget talks, which are probably gonna be coming up in the next couple of months. With the window project taking place in the courthouse here, we're looking at moving the entrance to the courthouse if necessary. There's a slight possibility this may be needed, but we're planning on moving the entrance down to the law enforcement center west of the courthouse for safety reasons. Once they get up to a certain level and start working on the dome, the possibility of something happen, the people coming in the front entrance might happen. So we're, we're looking at moving it. There's a possibility we may not have to do that, but I still want to have a plan in case we need to pull the trigger on that. The work release program. Early last year, I suspended our work release program to focus on other areas of the agency. There's some things that we need to get in place and, and talks with the judges I need to start, because our programs director has partnered with Team Employment. Team Employment's reached out to us and has indicated there's a company here in town that has some starting shifts, on two different shifts. That would be great for people to help get reintegrated back into the population once they're released. So again, there's, there's a process I need to start by getting this, getting this going, and we can open up our work release program, and hopefully getting that into full swing within the next couple of months. The stat, the stat unit, they're gonna be the ones that actually run this work release program, but they're very, very busy. Last month, they had 100 transports. That, that includes taking people back and forth to DOC, courts, medical appointments, or other emergency callouts should they be needed. This concludes my update. Pending any questions?
Well, I'm pleased to hear that while you have some openings at the jail, that your other areas, both detectives and field are full force. I believe that's excellent. I think that that shows something about the department, that you keep your people.
Yes, sir.
That's important. You mentioned the work release, so I guess I would hope that we can get that going again soon.
Yes, sir.
I don't know a lot about it, but I did know that you contained that for a period of time. And I think that's, from the little understanding I have of work release situation, if we can get those people out into the community and started on a positive route, it's gotta be to everybody's benefit.
Absolutely, absolutely. It, it's a very important piece to the facility out there. A portion of it was made to accommodate that. When I, when I came on as a sheriff, and I found that there was one deputy dedicated full-time for four people, that didn't seem quite like a program to me. So as we focused on other areas and then tried to assess and see if we could manage this elsewhere, and I think Captain McClay has done an excellent job in figuring that, figuring that out for us. I think, I hope to move forward here soon.
Is this something that we could almost work with? Our transportation system? Or how could that work? Does an officer have to go with that person to work?
No. What, what this is, is that it's based on, it's based on the crime, what they're, what they're, how long they're gonna be there, recommendations from the judge, based on prior history, what else they have left to, to accomplish in the court system. There's, there's a ton of stuff that we look at to allow this person to, to live in the work release portion of the facility. They check in and out. There's certain requirements that they're asked to do and rules that they have to abide by to maintain in this. There will be officers that go out and spot check. You know, I hope to, I hope to get many people into this program. We've, I've already talked with the programs director, starting out with five, and look at, see how it's doing and then increasing that incrementally. We just don't want to pull the trigger and shove a bunch of people, you know. So we want to evaluate it, make adjustments if needed, and, and help do that. Of course, there is a, you know, there's money issues. There's, there's just a lot of issues, a lot of logistics that needs to be figured out. And I think by putting this into the stat team, that, that will, they'll, they'll accomplish it just fine.
I was just looking at maybe saving on some manpower if you didn't have to drive somebody to work. That maybe you could look, maybe possibility of looking at the transportation system we have here.
Again, we have, there's a, another mental health caseworker that helps people when they get released. He also has a program to obtain bicycles. We do have an R-CAP bus stop out there.
Okay.
And we can coordinate that piece if we need to. And I'm sure Barbara would, would help with that also.
Okay.
Along with the program, one of the requirements is to make sure that they, they have a ride of some sort.
Eric, what is the stat program? You mentioned that, and that doesn't ring any bells.
So, so the stat team is our transport unit. It consists, we, we have a fleet of cars. We have two SUVs, a sedan, and a van. That was implemented largely when we were housing out of county, because we had so many people. Well, now that the facility's out from the courthouse, we still need that, that transport unit. Plus, if there's a fight in a pod and someone gets a broken nose or something like that and needs to go to the ER, well, they get called out, and they do that. So if we have people that are mentally ill, that, that midnight, there's a bed waiting for them in, in laundery, that team gets called out and they transport those. They're pretty much on call quite a bit. They rotate, and they have certain ones that are on call from time to time, especially over weekends. But they do all their transports, back and forth to courthouse, especially with jury trials kicking up. They provide the courtroom security during a jury trial while we have someone in custody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sheriff, thanks for your leadership. Appreciate the good work, what your team's doing. Obviously, you've got a lot of good things going here. Thank you for that. Please thank your team as well. What would you say the, the biggest challenge we have in Reno County is for, for your area of focus?
Well, I, I know that I, we've had a lot of overdose deaths lately. I'm sure you all seen the press release that was put out a couple of weeks ago. Last year, I, I moved two personnel positions from the jail over to the, to the, to the drug enforcement unit. And last year, the, the end of the year stats actually was probably holding some record stats. You know, they recovered over 700 pounds, I'm sorry, seven pounds of meth. But that's just what we've been able to stop, you know, with a handful of people. So, you know, my main focus, a lot of the crime that occurs is somewhat centered around drug usage, whether it's to try to obtain it, or they have obtained it, and now they need more, or they just go out and commit more crimes and victimize peoples. So, you know, if there was one area I would like to focus on, would probably be that.
Is there, is that something you could come back to us and tell us how we can help in that area?
I tell you what, I, I will definitely get a team together, and, and we'll put some stuff together and see if there's, see if that would be the main focus and what, what we could do. And if there's anything to ask for, we definitely will.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I, I want to kind of help you with that a little bit, if I could, or mention something that might help you with it.
Yes, sir.
I think it's important to the people out in the community, out in the county or the city, whatever, to let you know when they think there might be some trafficking with regarding to drugs, and either call you or call one of the commissioners and let them know what they think they might have. So at least you have knowledge of it. And then the next thing is, once you have knowledge of it, I hope that the people that called in realize that it can't, you can't do anything quickly on this until you have the proper proof to be able to stop that, if there is action that way. So I think letting you know and then having the patience to wait while you do something is a combination of things that certainly can help.
Yes, sir. And, and that, also, we have that Crime Stoppers. If they call Crime Stoppers, even if they don't want to, I mean, they don't want to be known, that, and that's what a lot of people do. They, they see something they feel is happening, but they're scared that they will come back on them because they'll know who ratted them out, so to speak.
I, I've completely forgot about Crime Stoppers, and I never have forgotten about that as the years I spent on there. But yeah, Crime Stoppers, please use that number.
Absolutely. They can be anonymous or not, regardless whether they want a reward for any, anything that we see. But that, that automatically goes to our detective division and is put out automatically by that call center.
And you're anonymous.
Correct.
And it's maintained anonymous.
Absolutely.
All right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If it's all right with everyone, we're about an hour and a half into the meeting. Would everyone be okay with a recess for five minutes? We'll start back up at about 12:30. Wind conversion systems, proposed regulations. And with that, start off, and it's, we've talked about this before. Mr. Sellers, Commissioner Friesen's talked about this with regards to the fact that certain areas of the county would be virtually impossible to have an industrial-type wind conversion system in. And so I would like to propose a little thing to consider before we get into this, and it has to do with the proposed regulations, is that we look at, and have been requested by at times from the planning zoning, to look at straightening up some lines and give them some direction with regards to zoning, potential zoning, and so forth. And so I want to hand out, you've got one, but here.
This is an existing map.
And then I wanted to also pass out a little larger map of the, of the county with some, with some thoughts and some ideas on, on this. With the idea that, in my research and so forth, that looking at a potential area that would or would not be conducive to the, to having, letting Reno County still have an area where we could, if people wanted it, and a company wanted it, that they could actually build and construct in. And so doing that, I looked at what I thought was an even straight line, that if you look at Dean Road, everything south of the river, and even north of the river, is, all the townships of Grant East, Reno North, Reno South, Lincoln, Castleton, and Albion, all, all have their western boundary at Dean Road. The little line here that's kind of jagged, everything east of, well, including Grant East and Reno, but everything east of that jagged line here, and, and it turns and goes out into Castleton and around Ninnisco, everything east of that is the zoned area on the big map. Everything east of that jagged line, including Grant East, Reno North, and Reno South, is either zoned, or it is in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of South Hutch and Hutch. So then I looked at the household density, as well as rivers, and it, the nearest I could come would be in the unzoned area east of Dean Road, which includes part of Lincoln, Castleton, and Albion. And there may be, I think there's less than 36 sections that either has household density or irrigated ground that would, would not be conducive or follow any regulations with regard to the opportunity to have regard to the opportunity to have a wind energy conversion system on their property. So, and if you look west of there, there's 24 miles by 30 miles that's west of Dean Road. And taking out a few sections, there's 700, there's a, there's less than 717 sections available because you don't know just exactly what is out here in North Hays and Hayes that has to do with Quavera. But there's a vast majority of the western Reno County that certainly has opportunity to have a, an industrial wind energy conversion system in that area. Whereas, no matter where you put the line here, but I just looked at Dean Road because it seemed to me that, that every township, that was an easy guide rather than splitting a township. And so I just wanted to present that with you, with the concept that...
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure I understand your concept. I understand your line, but I don't understand what you're suggesting.
Well, I'm suggesting that we prohibit industrial wind energy systems in all the presently zoned area of Reno County and including the unzoned area east of Dean Road. And I think the household density is as great in that area as it is everything east, which is considerably more than... So that's, that's, that's what I'm suggesting as, and I would, with prior discussion, I would, I would be more than willing to move that or discuss about lines. But the reason I came up with Dean Road is not only a population east of there, but also that that makes a straight line for planning and zoning. And that's what I think Mark's been asking, to find something and then go out and maybe in the next 60 to 90 days, go have some meetings in that area to talk about zoning. And give some guidelines to see what zoning means and what it doesn't mean to the people out there, how it will affect them and how it won't affect them. And that's been talked about for two years, I believe, Mark. And so this is a way to get started on that and still enable a good chunk of the county to be able to be considered for wind energy production. Whether it suits or doesn't suit, that's not up to our decision. I think that at one time out here in probably Huntsville, Walnut, Enterprise, Midora area, I'm not sure that covers more than what it was, but there was consideration and agreement to do a wind energy conversion system out there several years ago.
Well, I'm kind of with Commissioner Sellers. I'm not quite sure, like, are you, are you proposing a moratorium in this entire section? Are you proposing that the planning commission look at expanding the zoning area to this new area? What are you proposing?
I'm proposing that they, we prohibit wind energy, industrial wind energy conversion systems in that area east of Dean Road.
Okay.
Which primarily is zoned area, there are just very few sections that are, could even be built on, from my understanding and my touring and my looking at that. And I think, I don't think we could do the zoned area, you could find another area, but to me, this made the most easiest for our planning commission and Mark and planning and zoning, because they've been asking for some definition and asking for direction. And so I'm proposing that direction. And very little will be done in any of the, I don't see in the zoned area that, as you mentioned before, Commissioner Friesen, and that...
Okay, maybe I need more clarification of your idea here, but as I understand it, County Counselor, correct me if I'm wrong, Article 23 that we've been considering for several months here has only to do with zoned areas within the county. Would that be agreed to by everybody here today? Okay, so what you're suggesting is that, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you're suggesting that we not allow wind conversion systems in the existing zoned area, which you would like to have expanded. But how does this affect the other areas of the county that are unzoned where we would have no ability to control what proposals might come to us? Because they have no regulations they have to abide by, and excuse my framing those words, but...
Right.
But my understanding is that, that in the unzoned area of the county, distances from a unparticipating house or distances from a property line or anything like that would not have any bearing on a proposed wind project. And I think that we need to think that through because even though that area isn't zoned, it needs some type of regulation for wind energy conversion systems.
I would completely agree with you, Commissioner Sellers.
So what's your answer to that?
My answer to that is the regulations would occur everything west of Dean Road.
But your regulations can't, can't be effective for areas of the unzoned county?
They can be, from what I understand. I'm talking, Mark? We can do that, from what I understand, Council.
These regulations would not apply to the unzoned area of the county. If, if we wanted to apply these regulations, then we would have to go through the formal process of zoning the rest of the county to do that.
Earlier, we were told we could do an overlay.
Well, you can, you can do an overlay, but to me, you know, an overlay is really not appropriate. In order to do an overlay, you need to zone the county first and then you would do an overlay. Overlay, overlay zoning, I'll give you an example, think of it, you know, the city of Hutchinson, I believe, has overlay zoning districts on some of their corridor entryways. An overlay zoning is like added, added regulations on top of your current zoning regulations. And there may be other cities, you know, maybe the city of Bueller has something, I'm not, I'm not sure, but an overlay zone is where you want added protections or added requirements for a certain area on top of what you already have on your zoning regulations. And so, so to me, you would zone the county first and implement the current zoning regulations we have, and then you would adopt Article 23 with that.
But we could do that in the unzoned areas.
I believe you could. Technically, you could. You could just, if you wanted to apply just wind regulations in the unzoned area, you can do that. I know the planning commission studied that immensely here when this process, when this was first, you know, brought up. We got to talking about other types of land uses out there that we may or may not want to regulate, and we really got bogged down in that process because there, there are other land uses out there that maybe are worthwhile, you know, of regulating. Now, I'm not saying that we have to do something like that, but that's where the planning commission got bogged down, you know, in that process. But, yeah, theoretically, you could do an overlay.
Does the ability for property owners that don't want a development in the unzoned area, do they still have the right to petition against it without zoning?
Well, you would have that written in. We would probably have to go back and revise these regulations where they would have the ability to do your protest petition and stuff and, and be notified, all of that.
But what, that's not the question I ask. Presently, they have no right of petition.
Present, oh, well, yeah, if you're talking about presently, they have no right, yeah. They have no rights out there.
Does an overlay require the standard process of planning commission, public hearing?
Yes. Yes, it does.
That's where that education comes in the process, with meetings in the community?
I think if you're looking to do something today, you should, I think it would be helpful if you proposed what you're wanting so we could give you an indication of whether there's consensus to do that. Seems like if you wanted to do something immediate, you'd have to propose a moratorium, otherwise we'd have to send something down, down to the planning board for an extensive
Comments from Mark or Don? Any more comments, or Joe? I can pin this down for consideration if you'd like, me too.
I think it would be good just for you to test the waters here so we can...
Don?
Yeah. I'm not sure what direction, but something to think about if this is what you want to do. From the Dean Road east, what you drew, if that's what you agree on, then you can have a moratorium on and, and, and not allow wind there and, and adopt the regulations as you see fit to adopt them. And it fits everywhere else in the rest of the county if it ever gets zoned. So don't make the moratorium or anything have anything to do with the regulations. Keep it separate. So you can have a moratorium and ban wind wherever you want it and adopt the regulations that will be ineffective to the rest of the county if any of the rest of the county ever gets zoned. If that makes anything clear to think about. And then if you adopt regulations and you don't make it a part of the moratorium, you don't make it a part of a ban, then it never has to go back to the planning and zoning commission to amend it. Yet you can still have your ban wherever you want it.
Well, I have, I have some difficulties with changing the line, an arbitrary line at a, I, I think the green zoned area is understood, but to change the, the line there, I think presents some struggle to me. It, it, it seems like to me, and, and maybe, it, it seems like in some ways we've made this thing too difficult, is that in my mind, there is never going to be a project in southeastern Reno County because they've got the right on any project to petition. They've shown that in the past and they have the ability to get enough petition holders that it requires a super majority vote. And there is not a super majority vote on this commission. So a proposed project in southeastern Reno County, I don't think is possible. Commissioner Friesen brought up several weeks ago, and candidly, this has gone on so long it's hard for me to think what we talked about when, but the, the fact that the other potential location for this is probably in the east of Hutchinson and north of Hutchinson and so forth, and Commissioner Friesen suggested that probably the attitude towards that populated area might be similar if something was proposed. So to, to me, it's just not going to happen in those areas. And so I think, at least, I sense that some commissioners are saying in the lessly, lesser populated areas that wind energy is appropriate, and I strongly feel that we do not want to outlaw wind in the whole county, is, is why can't we pass this ordinance, this article, I guess, and, and let things happen? And the things that won't happen aren't going to happen. It, it will take care of itself, from my point of view. So I, I, I'm sorry I spoke so long.
No, I, I think that's good. So, you know, Mr. Chairman, I, I, you know, I, I don't know what, what's more fair for you to propose what you're thinking or for me to just tell you what I'm thinking, and so maybe I'll just tell you what I'm thinking.
I think that, that's what we're after. Okay?
I don't think you're going to get a moratorium in, in any of these areas. I don't agree with it. I generally agree with what Commissioner Sellers is saying, to the point where it's like, it's, it's like we're looking over here when we should be looking over there, right? But the fact of the matter is, this, what we have up for the debate here is this green area. And, you know, I've been accused of not listening to the planning commission. I think your proposal goes even further than that and, you know, arbitrarily, or, you know, I think it's a reasonable line. Like, like, don't get me wrong, like, I think the idea you have seems reasonable, but it seems out of order. It ought to go back to the planning commission, they ought to give public comment. And so I think for those reasons, this suggestion won't get a second here today, I'm guessing. And so I still, so where I disagree with you both for different reasons is I think there's some significant value in not kicking the can down the road, either by putting a moratorium on it or approving the regulations as they stand. Because either one, I don't think gets us where we want to be in this county, takes the pressure off of everybody and nothing's going to happen. I like the pressure that's associated with a decision not being final. I think I've seen activity from both parties working towards either some sort of compromise or better communicating with, with those that, you know, I hope they're communicating with you. I know if we just kick this thing down the road, I, I think it's the same exact trajectory that we were on two years ago. And so I like, as much as it's uncomfortable for everybody, I like the idea that the parties need to continue to work towards an alternative and not making a decision today. I mean, some people, I think, have called, you know, me indecisive. I think actually I'm specifically making a strategic decision not to make this decision final because I think that'll just take the heat off and, and we won't get what we want in this county. And with that, I would make the motion to table this matter for another six weeks or three meetings.
Just for discussion purposes, and I learned this from Chairman Hurst.
Okay.
I will second that.
Okay, thank you.
And that second is not saying that I agree with the motion. Daniel, would you try to explain further what, what good six weeks is? I'm, I'm, I attended meetings a year before I was elected and this has been on the agenda now for three years.
I think it's better than doing the same thing over again, number one. Number two, I've seen significant progress in just active communication. just active communication between all of the parties, especially with the Chamber and EDAC on looking for alternative solutions. And I think you kick it down, kick the can down the road, everybody will be happy and nobody will do anything.
Okay, I didn't understand your last statement. What is kicking the can down the road?
It means you approve this language probably frustrate a lot of people in southeast Reno County. Because I I think they feel like it's still a risk. And nothing really specific happens. There there's still the risk hanging over their head, and there's still no project in Reno County, either west or otherwise. So I don't think it does anything productive. I think keeping the pressure on the parties is the most productive decision at this point.
I look at six weeks as kicking the can down the road. That's kind of where I'm at.
Well, you guys have been on this commission longer than I have, and you haven't got it done yet. So I'm offering you an alternative solution. Six weeks in a process where you guys have been involved with with multiple years. I've been here two and a half months. Six weeks is nothing in this process.
And 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 again, and I I think you've already said this, but I I'm going to ask you the same question. You think if we allow more time, the results might be more positive than if we make a decision today?
Absolutely.
You know, I listened to SB 279 when it came up for testimony. And I heard Kim Savatny from the Wind Energy Group, and I heard Alan Anderson from the attorney for I don't know how many wind companies, but at least Nextera. Their testimony said that if a community doesn't want a wind energy conversion system there, we will pull out. So I'm not fully understanding exactly why that comment was made when we're still in a lawsuit. So.
We can keep poking them, and I they may eventually leave. Um, and and but I don't think that has any real relevance in the decision we have to make today.
Well, but your your motion is not to make a decision.
It's to table. The decision is to table the issue for six weeks to allow the parties to continue to find a a position that works for all three of us. This is not, it's not unusual to have a regulatory body look to the people that the policy is affecting and say, hey, give us a better solution that works for all of you.
I think we've done that. I believe we have. Mr. Chairman, I I respect how you feel, but I think you don't have as much feeling towards wanting to have some type of wind in Reno County as some of the rest of us do. And and I I appreciate your feelings, and I understand your feelings, but I think you should appreciate some of the rest of our feelings that how can we maneuver this towards a project?
And and that's exactly what I was trying to do by by saying, okay, there are certain areas of the county, a big chunk of the county, that
So are you both right here? But we should.
We should keep the conversation based.
Keep the conversation going, and if that conversation doesn't ha- go towards a positive end, we move more towards the position that you stated today.
No, I I'm I'm I fully believe that we're just really kicking the can down the road if we don't put a pro- prohibition on wind in the specific areas. We know that, you've brought that up before, that it's not going to happen in the zoned areas at least. So I I think we just we need to make that decision right there because it's going to go on and on and on and on. If we have to go back in, we get another protest petition, we go again, it's it's going to happen. And I don't think any part of the zoned area. I was just trying to come up with something that would even it out a little bit for planning and zoning and and to to say, okay, from this point here, rather than having splitting sections, going half sections, a quarter or whatever. That's where I was looking at, even east of K 14.
Even if at some point in time, we move more towards your thinking on this. I don't think it's appropriate to include the moratorium on any of the area that's unzoned. The county, and I need some help from Mark and and Joe, I guess, is Joe's been with numerous commissions. There's numerous county commissions that have wanted to increase the zoning in Reno County for years and years and years. And the population has said, don't touch me. And so I I I think that including your straight line is an inappropriate deal because those people in the past have said, don't touch me. Now they're faced with a situation that says it's to their benefit to be green.
Well, I know many people that out there that that have contacted me that that don't want any part of zoning. Okay?
Well.
And so from that standpoint.
This is what zoning does, is protect people, such as where you might put a trailer out.
Mr. Chairman.
What I'm thinking of is if if we can come up with something that says, okay, let's leave the unzoned area alone. Let's get planning and zoning to say within the next ninety days that they will schedule meetings, or sixty days, whatever, cha- schedule meetings throughout the rest of the area to tell, to at least inform people. And I've had people say that, hey, I I don't mind that. I need to learn a little bit about what it'll do to me and what it won't do to me. So I guess we'll but I I think at least the zoned areas, they're they're there isn't going to, there there's no chance of of having any wind energy in the zoned areas, I don't feel. You'll get op- you'll get opposition north to south, east to west, in the zoned areas. We'll be in the same boat here. Do you think that's probably true?
I don't know. I respect Commissioner Freezen that suggests in his mind that there might be movement towards a satisfactory solution, so I'll support his motion at this point. I think I'd call for a question if I can get a second for that.
Well, you won't need to call for the question because I'll just pass for a roll call.
I think I think Don wants to.
Don, excuse me. I'd like to say something if I may, being the director of planning and zoning, the staff, and was asked to create a the starting point of regulations. When we was asked to create these regulations, we was asked to to protect and consider the concerns of the people that had concerns with wind. Let's say the people on the east southeastern part of the county. At the same time, we was asked to create regulations that did not ban wind in Reno County. And that's exactly what you received. You received regulations that do address issues as flicker, wind setbacks. And at the same time, doesn't ban wind in Reno County. It doesn't guarantee wind anywhere in Reno County, but it doesn't ban them. So two of you commissioners and Bob got exactly what you asked for, as far as that goes. If you create the regulations any stiffer than they are, then the regulations as they stand, without waivers, bans wind. And that's not what you asked for. I don't, what I don't understand is on these regulations that was presented to you, that if they're passed, if eighty percent of the people in any area where wind's going in, landowners don't agree with it, then they can petition it. And then, so if the wind generator companies don't negotiate enough with them people, and that's between them, the people, the landowners, and the wind generator company, then that happens. And then if that happens, it 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 comes before here and it probably fails. End of story, it doesn't take two years. We've dragged this out two years, but that process doesn't take two years. Now, if there's any other part of the county that gets zoned or whatever with these regulations, and it's those regulations are fine enough for any other area, then possibly a wind generator company comes in and builds wind cells. So I don't know why the worry is of letting the process work out. You have the regulations that doesn't ban them, and it and it and it takes care of some concerns. And if a wind company can't negotiate enough with these people to to create stricter concern regulations, to add to those regulations, then so be it. And if they can negotiate out of it, and it is acceptable, and you have enough landowners that agree to it, then possibly one goes in.
I think you're stating the exact position that I'm in. That that it it'll take care of itself through the petition process. And petitions don't take that long once a project's proposed. And.
These regulations for the southeast corner are a starting point for negotiations with the wind company and those people. It can't be less than that, but they can make it greater than that, and they can come to that agreement. And these regulations are fine, and you don't want them any stricter, or you don't want them stricter maybe. They work both ways. You just have to let it go through the process. It doesn't guarantee wind, and it doesn't ban wind.
But also most of the regulations here have a opportunity for a landowner to negotiate less distances, less sound, more sound, more whatever. They have that opportunity to negotiate. If we, if it is like it stands now, three thousand feet, then there's a.
No, it's not three thousand feet now in the in the proposed regulation. That was suggested to be changed, but it hasn't been changed.
Well, it's not agreed upon, but it's in the regulations as it stands now. That a participating or non-participating.
Let's make sure we know what we're talking about.
Okay.
The the last discussion that we had, there was a discussion by two of the commissioners that we might potentially change the two thousand feet to a s- a distance greater, and it was thrown out three thousand. But I don't think that was ever voted upon, but.
Yeah, you're you're right. It's a dr- it's a draft.
But it's up there.
It's a draft. Based on.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, you're right.
And there's one other instance that I want to bring up with regard to this before, if we're going to get into this. Maybe we ought to vote on this first.
Yeah, let's.
Let's let's do that.
Thank you.
Let's do a roll call.
Okay, hang on.
And re- restate the motion.
Yeah, I I forgot what the motion was even. Table, table six weeks.
Yeah.
Which, just to be specific, if I got the dates right, would be May twenty fifth.
Is that an extra meeting?
No, it's the fourth Tuesday in May. Is that right?
Good.
May twenty fifth.
May, May, May twenty fifth. That's my motion.
So you you were going to table it until May twenty?
Yes.
Got it down yet? Okay.
Are you ready for the?
Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Freezen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
No. There's one thing about the regulations that I would like to add a little to it. Is that.
Well, now, I'm.
Go ahead. This was discussion.
I think we need to agree whether we're going to have discussion and add, like, you're you're going off the agenda now because we just tabled the item. So we we, I think you, I think you need to request a new topic if we're going to do that.
I don't have any trouble requesting some extra knowledge that I've learned, if it's all right with you all.
Well.
If it's not, we won't do it.
I I don't care. I just think it's a little out of order, but it's your, it's your meeting.
Well, I think we tabled the decision until May twenty second, didn't we? But anyway.
We tabled this.
The whole discussion?
This topic.
All right.
And I.
All agree.
Well, I'd kind of like to hear what you got to say. I think Commissioner Freezen's correct in this process.
Well, you can put it in the, your comments.
Yeah.
Okay, I will do that. There you go. Okay. I'm a little disappointed, but that's all right. Uh, department reports. Don, be quit grinning at me now. We've had these discussions a lot. County administrator report.
Attached in the packet is the department reports, they're monthly reports. Didn't know if anyone had any questions on those. They're general updates that we do each month. Again, as a reminder, instead of a department coming in here multiple times a year, this, they come in once a year, but then each month give a report that's sent to me and then put into the packet for for the first meeting of the month. And I believe every department does take part in this. Then financial reports. Attached in the packet and don't have a lot, this would be more for questions. If you have questions on this, but it kind of shows the funds from the beginning of the year, the revenues, expenditures, and then the ending balance through the month of March. And you can see some, the funds are different. Some funds, like the general fund's doing really well, but the largest part of our property tax distribution takes place in the first part of the year, which is why the revenues are higher there. Expenditures are spread out throughout the year. So toward the end of the year, we receive less funds from property tax in general. So the ending balance right now is twenty million dollars. The general fund budget is twenty-six and a half million dollars. So we're in good shape right now, but again, the revenues will not always be that much higher than expenditures throughout the year. The funds like youth shelter, health capital outlay, and other, or and special alcohol and drug, those already have some routine expenditures and so they're appropriate, it doesn't have the property tax like the general fund has, the health department has, Noxious Weeds, Public Works. Any questions kind of on this overview of the of the fund year-to-date activity? And as you probably saw on the news and from Brenda's emails, the sales tax collections are up and doing really well this year. So we're in good shape with sales tax. Hopefully that continues. I will comment. Fund zero nine seven, capital equipment reserve fund and ninety-nine CIP res- reserve fund, those are the new funds that were created for year-end transfers. Twenty twenty resolution was passed to allow for transfers. Those have taken place, but they were after this report was run. So the reserve funds do have cash, and they do have revenues. The special, or the county equipment reserve fund received some money from the, some unspent sheriff and jail expenditures. received some money from the, some unspent sheriff and jail expenditures, moved into the equipment reserve for some radio, possible radio purchases coming up that were not in their budgets, as they're having some issues with radio, special line patrol. And then also for other special equipment, whether it's guns, ammo, other equipment that the sheriff may need that was not in his budget will help kind of lessen the burden on the operating budget. The CIP Reserve Fund also, I don't have the numbers in front of me, has cash in it, had transfers from the CIP fund that were unused. Some, so this will be reserved, and then it has over a million dollars in it now. Some of the courthouse improvements line item in the general fund was moved into this fund for other projects that may come up, emergencies, or the, any courthouse renovation that is being looked at there, will be some cash in this non-tax levy fund. And then on the other page, this breaks down the year-to-date expense report by department within each fund. And through twenty-five percent of the year, we're in good shape. I don't see any, I didn't notice any departments that were, you know, in trouble. If they are above that amount, they may have some capital or expenditures that are a large part of their budget that hit at the beginning, and the rest of their budget's probably just personnel cost. Any... Keep going down. Have any questions? All right, okay. The other, another item on, under my report, Youth Services Director. So Shelley Brennemeyer has been with Reno County since nineteen-eighty-eight, and has been the Assistant Director. Up until Bill Hermes retired at the end of twenty-twenty, Shelley then took over as the interim director. And my plan or recommendation, unless there's a concern from the commission, is to go ahead and promote her to the director and remove the interim title. She's done a great job, she's been with us for a long time, knows, I've kind of worked with her and paid attention for the past three months of her work as director, and she's doing a great job. Things are great over at Youth Services. And I just kind of wanted to bring that up, that that is my plan to promote her to the director. See if there was any questions you guys might have.
That's fine.
Okay.
About the rest of the commissioners.
All right, thank you. The other item I have, it wasn't on here. I wanted to bring up, and in my weekly update, I did mention the Reno County landfill fiber. There's been discussions about that for a few months, about what to do with fiber or access, internet, network access out at the landfill, especially when we transfer over to the new scale house. Originally, it was discussed about if we partnered with a local company and built our own fiber, that it would be around a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to lay fiber out there and own it. That hundred and eighty thousand does not include annual cost, right-of-way cost, and maintenance over time. The county, the county commission at the time had wanted me to look into alternatives. We're not supportive of spending that kind of money for internet, for access out at the landfill. The other option was to, with the local company, to buy one gig of service, which was a thousand dollars a month, for the, which would more than double the bandwidth that we have right now, which is adequate. Then, looking at other options, some alternatives were discussed, and Mike had a conversation with Ideatech, with some, with staff out there. I believe it was Nate Oswald out at Ideatech about dark fiber, or buying fiber that Ideatech already has. And so we would, I guess technically own or access certain bands of fiber that Ideatech owns, but then we would own it. And we went back and forth with some dollar amounts. The original amount that we offered was lower than what they wanted. They came back with a higher number. We went back with a lower number, and the amount, and I don't have exact details of those numbers, but ninety-five thousand dollars is what the current agreement or proposal on the table that I believe that in talking with Mike, he was happy with, and my understanding from the emails I saw from Ideatech, is that they could make that work also. So it would be my recommendation, or I wanted to see your input, if you're okay with Mike and I, then Joe, working on an agreement with Ideatech for ninety-five thousand dollars to buy some dark fiber that we would own with Ideat, or on Ideatech's line to the landfill. I looked at it, and it was about, I believe it was right around eight years is the payback for comparing that ninety-five thousand divided by twelve, and compared to a thousand dollars a month for eight years. That's what it would take with the monthly agreement to cover our costs.
I just wanted to note, I have a conflict of interest, I'd like that noted in the minutes.
Yeah, please note that, and... Commissioner Sellers, I don't know about you, but I'd like to see a potential agreement about next meeting.
I'd like to look at the contract that might be able to be negotiated. There's, I think, whether I'm for or against this would depend a little bit about how the contract's worded.
Okay. And I don't know that it has to be next week, does it?
No.
No, it can be at whenever you can get to it.
Explain a little bit more the money, you had some monies available. Was that, was that COVID money at one time?
Well, okay, so we had fiber, we built fiber with COVID money to the Public Works facility. That paid for that, it was eligible, because then we have access at the Public Works facility for remote workers. So we moved the appraiser down, or some staff at the appraiser. So we, so the fiber that we own, or will own to the Public Works facility is, or was paid for with CARES Act money. This pot, this money is not tied to COVID or this project, so it would be, it would come out of the solid waste fund. I believe Megan does have the, plenty of cash to cover this cost. So it would not be funded with any property tax dollars.
But didn't, didn't she, in her original proposals for the solid waste whole new building and rework out there, have monies in her budget for this fiber, or not?
No, because since we didn't, we pulled it out, we didn't have any answer. We didn't know whether we're gonna build our own for a hundred and eighty thousand, or just pay a monthly fee for a thousand a month, or this.
Okay. So the money that we've saved on reusing the used scale might now be spent other ways?
Yes.
Okay.
So, okay, I will bring that back. The only other item I have is, I wanted to make sure, so the budget work sessions, I had started planning on June twenty-ninth and thirtieth. It's the fifth Tuesday, and then the following Wednesday, having two days of work sessions. It was brought to my attention that, that maybe that wasn't the best time. And so I wanted to see if July sixth and seventh. We do not have a meeting scheduled for that Tuesday, July sixth, but if the three of you are available, if we could meet on July sixth and seventh, probably in the annex, and have budget work sessions similar to last year, where all the directors, and then I've also reached out to the fire chief. He was gonna be available, or have staff. And I've reached out to the city manager about the communications budget, to see if they could have someone there. And it was indicated to me that they would have someone at a work session to discuss their budgets, along with each department.
It was I that had the problem of the twenty-ninth and thirtieth. So if it's possible on the sixth or seventh, or would be great, you don't want to move it up a week ahead of the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, that's too early.
We probably could. If you guys are available, I could get the information done.
I guess I was just trying to give the other two, either of those, the twenty-second and twenty-third of June, or July sixth and seventh worked for me. So if somebody else has a conflict, maybe we could give a choice.
And as a reminder, this work session will be more about the expenditures. It won't be the budget worksheet, most likely with all the taxes and the tax implication. This will be to look at after they've already, after each director or department has gone through a discussion with me, to look at possible changes. This will be even with the administrators, possible recommendations, or still have questionable items on there. When staff is requested, additional staff is requested, depending on how it looks with the overall budget, that may be discussed at these meetings. So yes, earlier in June helps with the overall budget, but the difference between the twenty-second and twenty-third and sixth and seventh shouldn't have too much impact on the work that I do, and that Shonda does.
Either, either day.
That's way too far out for me to figure, so I can write it down either way.
So I think, I think it needs to be your choice, Randy, is what I'm hearing from the group.
Okay, if all four of those days, I'll check with some of the agencies that may have already scheduled this to make, see which one, see, I'll let you know, but...
Okay.
One note, did you say July fifth?
Six.
Six.
Just six.
And seven. And knowing that's coming off a holiday weekend, so I didn't know if that, if the pre, yeah, maybe June twenty-second and twenty-third works better. But I can, I'll look at my schedule also with things, and with some of the departments, to make sure we have everything.
Yeah, both are okay with me.
Okay. All right.
I didn't look earlier enough, but if it's all right with fellow commissioners and Randy and Joe, I will have county commissioner reports before the executive session.
Sure.
So the executive session, we're done. Okay. Commissioner Friesen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just had a couple notes. The, I toured the dump, the landfill, just so you guys can mark that off your list for me to do.
Well, we can add something else.
It's two and a half hour tour, very enlightening. Doing a great job out there. I was impressed overall. Do a lot of things, and it certainly helped me further understand some of the thoughts that I have on, on the rate, rates that we're gonna be discussing here in another two weeks. Okay, yeah. I was a little disappointed last meeting that I didn't get all my questions answered. It's a little hard for me to complain after I, you know, did the same thing to you today, Mr. Chairman, so... But I, I, I do think you guys are missing some things on, on how we're allocating rates. And, and I, I think the point of, of not wanting to charge residents a fee to dump, to make kind of, I would say residential trash dumping, I think that point is, is kind of confusing the, the point I'm trying to make, because I agree with both of you that we shouldn't create a, a fee structure that deters people from using the dump, from a residential perspective. However, just, just looking through the data, and, and who's producing what, I think the residential rates are carrying a much higher burden versus the actual amount of, of waste that they're producing. And, and I also want to reiterate the point that I don't think it's a great place to be on the tax rolls. It just makes everybody's taxes look even higher. I think it belongs on the, the trash bill. And I understand some people in the county do not receive a trash bill, but they don't produce as much waste that goes to the landfill either. And so I think you could easily allow that same privilege for everyone in the county to use the landfill that's on a kind of a personal basis. And, and we walk through, you know, how much of that refuse comes in every day that's kind of on a, you know, pickup truck load versus a commercial load. And it's pretty minimal, generally speaking. But I, I think there are other issues. Because we've focused so long on this county of that one, like, hey, we don't want to charge a residential user, that, that our rate structure is, is upside down. And, and if you look at it, commercials producing way more refuse than residential, and there's a number of other issues, and hopefully we can get into that, but I think not asking those questions, I don't, I think we're gonna continue down this road where the residents of this county are, are bearing too much of the burden of the cost, because this is a, to me, this is a utility. Like, it's something that you pay for if you use in some manner or another, and, and I think, like I said, I think it's, it needs to be looked at more than we looked at it two weeks ago. I, I would like this commission's consent to encourage the staff to start thinking about how the, the ARP funding that we're going to get is going to be distributed or utilized, and, and maybe put it on the agenda in the coming weeks, because I've, I've got some ideas on how it should be used. And, and I've seen other agencies, counties and cities start to talk about it. And I think if we can get in front of that and have a plan, because, because we're gonna get a check for, you know, at least six million here in next month.
But have the rules been determined?
Not...
Not on everything, there's some general guidelines. The Treasury Department has not given specific information about the rules that counties would need to follow.
I think we need to let Randy look at that, and...
I mean, that's a good, that's a good point. I guess, no matter what, as soon as the rules are out, I think we need to really start talking about that quickly. One second. And then I'm going, I'm gonna, the sheriff offered a tour of his defensive driving program this afternoon, so I'm gonna go, go do that this afternoon. I think Commissioner Sellers has a little whiplash from his experience, but... That would be the end of my report. I would ask commissioners at the end, since, I'd like to get another picture of the three of us. of us without masks at the end, if you got time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good, Commissioner Sellers?
Okay. Got several items, but I'll try to be as brief as possible. Appreciate the County Administrator informing us about making the Youth Services Director permanent. It seems to me that the Directors work for the County Administrator, and so it should be his decision on these people, who is hired, and who's fired, and who's promoted, and so forth. But I do appreciate the information that you provide along those means. We discussed some input on the burning ordinance, and I think that that should be done and brought back to us. Randy, you might think about how that should best be approached. We've talked about the willingness to, to let farm and ranch burning occur, but I'm very concerned about safety of saying. My next item, I need Daniel's help on. I understand you were at the forum on Saturday, the legislating forum, and there was a question about voting machines being.
Oh, yeah.
Good. What was the question?
Well, and that, I appreciate you bringing that up, because that was an item I forgot to put on my list. I think there are two principal issues. The Hutch Post ran a brief article on, I think they picked up on it and asked the, the County Clerk a little bit.
And I heard her response.
And so, two issues. One was that there's a specific voting machine manufacturer, Dominion, which, which potentially has some stigma associated with it, whether it's fully substantiated or not. I think the County Clerk did a good job explaining how those machines are not connected to the internet, and are never connected to the internet, and how the process works. But I think there was, there was just some requests for transparency, and maybe we could put that on our website, like reiterate what that is, and if there's other questions, get those answered. The second point, which I think is a fair point, and maybe it's, maybe we're, you know, stuck in some sort of statutoryal pit as to why we can't fix it, but, you know, when, when I have, have run for elected office, you go and get the, the list of registered voters, so you kind of know who your audience is. Well, there's, there's more registered voters on that list than there are, you know, people, including children in, in Reno County, and it's just in a, it's a, it's a process of, it's really hard, I think, to remove those people, and I don't know if that's a statutoryal issue, or, or what, but it was a valid point that our voter registration rolls have people on it that don't live here, that have died. And I, I've heard the clerk comment on it in the past and indicate it's, it's a difficult job, but it might be one to ask her to report back on ways to clean, clean the voter registration rolls up. If that makes sense, sorry. Kind of took your time there.
Okay, well, thanks for that clarification, because I don't know what, I didn't know what was brought up. I, I think the election officer did a good job responding to that question, and to my knowledge, there's been no knowledge of problems with the system, so I think that's been clarified. I think that's the items on my list. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Well, I was disappointed in not making a decision today regarding the prohibition on wind farms. I think we did successfully kick the can down six weeks. That, we're going to end up with the same thing. Same thing, we know what's going to happen. There's no sense in prolonging this. You ask the people out there, I think, I think it was a sign that corporations pushed out the people's will and their desires, and I think we let that happen. You know, right to disagree, but I think we let that happen. I would like to encourage the Commission to think about instructing the Zone Planning and Zoning Department to hold informational meetings, to gauge interest, to gauge thoughts, to have answers, give, give an informational meeting to the people so that they know what zoning will and won't do. We've talked about this thing forever, and as you mentioned, and I'd like to see maybe somewhere in the idea, just a suggestion, Mark, that you look at about five spots throughout the county. You take maybe Purdy Prairie, maybe the southwest of Whiteside, Dutch Kitchen area, you know how that'll go, or somewhere, then maybe Arlington, maybe Turon, maybe Fairfield High School, and maybe somewhere in northwest Reno County. You pick it out, but those are just thoughts. We, we talk about what things, what people think, we hear about them. Let's go out, the people that I have talked to said, no, we don't really want zoning, but I sure wouldn't mind hearing what it will and won't do. And, and I'd like to see that done within myself, within 90 days of setting out some meetings. Outside of that, I was, I liked Sheriff Campbell's report today. I thought it was very in-depth. Appreciate Planning and Zoning and the Department being here today, Don, with Public Works. And that's all I have, and so. Is that something that sounds relevant?
I, I would feel that we need an agenda item, more discussion of that before it takes place. I think we're, we've got enough going on with the wind at this point in time not to need to be doing the other at this point, that would be my vote, but I haven't heard the reasons for and against these county meetings at this point.
Well, I, I would agree on the point of just, it would be good to see exactly in writing what we're talking about. If you were to draft a proposal that we could look at at the next agenda item, I think that would be perfectly acceptable. I just, I'm, I'm not quite sure the scope of what you're suggesting.
All I'm asking for is no big scope. It's what the, you've talked about before in Planning and Zoning, about going out and just informing the people. I think Lisa French does an excellent job, well thought of, I think she would be very interested in doing that, is just to go out and be, explain what zoning in Reno County does and doesn't do for these citizens, who it affects, who it doesn't affect, and then be able to answer questions, and just an informational meeting. That's, that's it. But I can bring it up on agenda item next, next time, if you want me to, and Mark and Don and I could sit down and, and put up something, do you think, Mark, Don? Something that would do that, to present to the Commission then?
Didn't you say nobody, I mean, generally, everybody's opposed to zoning that you've talked to?
A lot of them are.
So why, why would we even bring it up?
Because I've been asked that they would like to have information on it so that they would be knowledgeable.
Okay.
All right.
Sounds fair.
I'll take a motion for executive session. Still 30 minutes?
Yeah, can I?
Yes, you can do that, and.
I would request a, a motion from this board to recess into an executive session for not to exceed 30 minutes, and I hope it can be less than that, to confer with legal counsel on a privileged legal matter, that being a proposed contractual relationship with the City of Hutchinson with respect to the firing range. I expect no formal action to come from the executive session. And following the executive session, the Board will resume its regular meeting, and if there's no other motion for further executive session, then I would expect you would adjourn for the day, and I would request the County Administrator remain for further executive session.
All right.
So move.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes.